Good evening, if we can stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, good evening, everybody. Um, I don't have anything tonight except Happy New Year. Hopefully 2021 will be better than 2020.
I agree.
But no guarantee yet. We will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve as presented? Thank you, Jerry. Second, David. Um, do you want to talk about the one, um, retirement, Joe?
Yeah, we do have one retirement. Lisa Malillo is retiring after, I believe it's, uh, she just, she will be finishing up her 35 year this year. Lisa's been a school psychologist at, at Massey, I believe, the whole time. You know, when I was the Massey principal, there's certain go-to people in your building that when, you know, whenever there's an emergency or whenever we've had to deal with any kind of tragedy, Lisa brought with her a wealth of expertise beyond just the school psychologist. You know, she was involved in a number of outside activities that brought a lot of wealth of expertise in with any kind of trauma that we ever had to deal with as a school. Definitely, you know, I would consider, you know, one of my most important go-to people when I was the principal at Massey. And, uh, she will definitely be missed and we wish her the best of luck.
Great. Anybody else have any comments? Hearing none. Um, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda? Thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. Um, our Massey kids are not here since, um, there was no school for the past week and a half. Um, so there's nothing really to report from them. Do we have any other committee reports? From anybody else? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to public participation. I will start here first. Paul, is there anybody on the phone? Is that Shannon or somebody else? Okay. So I'll start here first with public participation. All right, hearing none, can you unmute then? Is there anybody on the phone that wishes to participate in public participation? All right, hearing none, we will move on then. We will move on to the report of the superintendent. Are you doing it? No, no.
No. Um, I just want to give a quick update. The district health team, we don't take a break over the, uh, over the holiday. We met on actually New Year's Day, um, looking at, continuing to look at the health metrics and, you know, our numbers have been pretty stable. We're hoping to see some more stability now that the holidays are over, like many other, like many of the districts around us right now. We're remote this week with our goal of getting students, um, you know, back to school as soon as possible. You know, there are new quarantine guidelines, um, which should help with some of our staffing issues that, um, you know, we experienced during the first half of the year. I don't know if you've had a chance to see any of those, but the CDC has adopted flexibilities. And the district health team talked about, you know, all three of those flexibilities. Really, really two new flexibilities. One was the 14-day quarantine, which, you know, we're all pretty much familiar with. Probably the one that we were least comfortable with was the, uh, the seven-day quarantine, which allows for, um, the ability to be released out of quarantine after seven days with a negative test, given after day five, provided the subject, um, you know, continue to follow all mitigation measures and continue to self-monitor for 14 days in total. Um, you know, we thought that would be a really difficult one to track, um, and, you know, really, um, kind of sure, it comes with probably the highest risk. The, uh, we did feel that the 10-day quarantine could be a good option for us, especially as we've, as we've had to face some staffing issues. The 10-day, the 10-day quarantine option, um, would allow someone to return after 10 days rather than 14 days, provided that they had been asymptomatic the entire time, that they, um, continue to implement, implement the mitigation measures and then continue to self-monitor for, uh, for the 14, uh, self-monitor for symptoms for the entire 14-day period. So, um, you know, hoping that these flexibilities, I know, talking to a lot of my colleagues around the, uh, around the state, a lot of, a lot of districts are looking to implement these flexibilities to help with some of the staffing issues that we faced during the first half of the year. In terms of the substitute fair, I'll kick that over to Jack. Jack, I know Jen Parcell, I don't know who else, and Jack, I know you can talk about this a little bit more, but, you know, as we talk about some of the staffing issues that we faced, um, and we've talked about this before, I know Jerry's mentioned it, you know, having the, getting the, having the issue of, you know, being able to find viable candidates for substitutes has come up. We have held now two substitute fairs, um, and they're yielding some pretty positive results. And I know actually we have a third one on the docket coming up. Don't let Jack try to talk about that.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. Um, yeah, we, uh, we're really pleased with the outcome. December 17th, we have our second substitute fair. Jen Parcell, Sheila Castanelli, uh, Lisa Peterson, Laura Marr, um, Lauren Mattis, Denise Sands, myself. I hope I didn't miss anybody today. Are you going to be out? I, I hope not. And we had 26 people join us for the fair. I think the thing I was most impressed with, and, and this was truly a feedback from the entire group, we, uh, we broke out into small groups once we met and did a short presentation so that we could meet, um, each of the people for a moment or two individually. The diversity in the group is what impressed us all so much. We ranged from college students who knew that they would be online, so there would be days of the week that they'd be available to substitute. We had college, uh, recent college grads, uh, the December grads who are now, uh, home and, uh, they, they hadn't acquired a position or, you know, a professional position yet, so they were interested in subbing. Retired teachers, um, who were interested in returning to the workforce. And, um, one, uh, uh, woman that I met, just fascinating. She taught second and fourth grade in, uh, Gambia and has relocated and would like to get back into, uh, education, clearly certification being an issue. So she's getting her foot in the door by substituting. So she's, uh, it was just the conversation with her. I could have spoken with her the whole afternoon. It was just such a great conversation. But it was, we had a real wide range of experiences, uh, you know, diverse experiences, diverse backgrounds was great. Uh, we have 10 of the 26 people are in the process of onboarding now. And we're hoping with more to come from that fair. And we hope that, uh, on January 28th, we are scheduled to have another fair. And we hope we'll have, uh, similar even better, uh, outcomes.
Thanks, Jack.
Jack, do you think all 26 will come on or not all of them?
Um, if, if the first fair, it was a litmus test, they won't all, no. It'll be, if we're fortunate, it'll be about half. That's about what happened with, uh, the, the first fair we had. But likewise from that first fair, we actually hired in other roles, a few of those people as well. And that could happen here, you know, open pair of positions, things like that were filled from people who were at the fair, so.
Okay.
Yeah, to pick up 12 or 13 subs in the district would be huge right now.
Oh, absolutely. I, you know, I mean, that's, that's such a high percentage in comparison to our active support force. It's a, it's a great addition.
I was hoping to have a little bit more information on the, on the vaccine at this point. I did spend some time over break. I did go down, I did, uh, meet with the, um, the emergency operations team at the town just to see how their, um, you know, they started with the, uh, with the vaccine this week for Phase 1A. I'll talk about that a little bit more. But I did get some information from the department, the State Department of Public Health, came out on the 24th. So it's a little bit dated. You, most, mostly you probably know already, there's two vaccines out, the Moderna and the Pfizer. The one that is generally more available seems to be the Moderna vaccine. That's the one that does not need to be kept in the ultra-cold, um, storage units. Right now, we have started, and we've started in Connecticut and in Monroe with Phase 1. So, you know, eligible individuals in Phase 1 are our healthcare personnel, which our school nurses were part of that, uh, part of that initial group. So that's nice to know that we have some people that have already been, uh, available to get the vaccine. Long-term, long-term care facility residents and medical first responders are also in that group. School staff are included in Group 1B with individuals who are 75 years and older. We're not, I, I, I was hoping quite honestly to have, um, a, a timeline of when 1B is going to start. We don't have that yet. The state's still saying it's a little too early to say. I had heard as early as mid-January. That seems a little optimistic right now. So you have, you know, 1A, teachers, school staff are, uh, included in 1B. And then 1C is everyone who, uh, I'm sorry, individuals 65 to 74, other essential workers, and then people 16 to 64 with medical conditions. And then everybody else, um, uh, is in Phase 2, which, from what I'm hearing, is probably going to be, you know, towards the summer when they start getting to the general population. But it is good to know that our teachers are in, you know, one of the first groups to be, teachers, school staff, administrators, secretaries, everybody is in that, um, that second group. I know that's a, I know that's a piece that people are very, um, you know, concerned about. You know, I don't know how many doses have been given out in the state of Connecticut. I know as of December 22nd, there was, 22nd, there was 16,000 doses. Like I said, I did go to the town clinic, um, for the people in Age 1A who were eligible, um, last Tuesday. And it's different. It's a, it's a different setup, the way it, uh, the way it goes. It's not the same as our regular flu clinics. You know, regular flu clinic, you know, we usually have CVS comes in, you know, staff lines up, you roll up your sleeve, you get your shot and you, you go to first period or you, you know, you go back to your desk, whatever. This one is going to take a bit more time. One vaccinator, as of right now, and, you know, I'm hoping the process, you know, becomes a little bit more streamlined as they roll it out to, to other groups. But, you know, right now, you know, one vaccinator can do about six people per hour. Part of the, you know, unlike the flu shot where you just get it and you go, with this particular shot, you, you get the shot and you have to sit for 15 minutes for observation. You know, they're checking to make sure that there's no allergic reaction. So, um, you know, if we have, I think at the, I think at the town when I went to, I think they had two vaccinators. So they could do about 12 people per hour. So it's gonna, the rollout is going to be slower than, you know, normal vaccines. The, the system that they're using is a system called VAMS, which stands for the Vaccine Administration Management System. And basically what happens is for people in 1A, like our nurses and our school staff in 1B, your name and email will get uploaded into the VAMS system. Then you're sent an email, uh, when you, when you're eligible for the vaccine. They send you something saying, hey, you're eligible for the vaccine, here's where you can get it. The VAM system is, you know, will tell you where the administration sites are, which is very different than our flu clinics, which are basically what they would call, consider a closed clinic, where, you know, we would have CVS come in normally during flu season. And I, we've done this every year. We bring in, um, CVS, they go, they go to, uh, each building and all the staff members go to that particular building. All the, all the staff members in that building who want to be vaccinated, go get vaccinated. These are not closed clinics, so they're open to other people who are in your category. So for example, so, so for example, a teacher who lives in Monroe but teaches in Trafford, they'll be uploaded to the VAM system too, and they'll find out, hey, there's a clinic at Massey High School, Font Hollow, Monroe Well, or Stepney. Those are the four sites that we're looking right now. They're not looking to use Jockey Hollow and looking to have the staff from Jockey Hollow go to Font Hollow for the, uh, for the clinic. But, so theoretically, you know, our teachers in the same respects can also, when, when they're, when, when they get notified by VAMS, they can, uh, also go to other, other places to get vaccinated as well. Griffin Hospital, other areas like that. So it is, it is a little bit different. It's definitely, it's definitely different. Christine, you probably have more information on it.
Yeah, well, I got mine and it was, I, you know, mine's through Hartford Healthcare, so it was very easy. And I'm so confused because it's very quick. Like you get your vaccine, it takes about 30 seconds and then they put you in a section over there. There was probably a good amount of us in about five minutes.
Really?
Yeah, it was very quick. You walk in, you check in, you do everything online, you sit, you get your shot, you go over there, you wait 15 minutes.
And then just go?
And you just go.
That's good.
And then my mom got her email for the VAM system and she got it today, first available is Wednesday.
Oh, wow.
At the, at Monroe's Health Department.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, so it's very, and her coworkers, all we're, are getting them starting tomorrow.
Good, good.
So it's a very quick process.
Good.
And not a lot, we got our email, the next day we could get it.
And you got it done where, at?
I got mine done at St. Vise, but it comes up with a whole list of, um,
Places where you can get it?
Places. I could have gone to Hartford, Shelton, they were all over.
I mean, it was the first day that they were doing it in Monroe, so it may have ran slower.
Yeah, like I said, she got her email today, she got, she's going Wednesday, my mom.
Oh, let me know, I'll be interested to see.
Yeah, and for me, it was, yeah, yeah. It was, it's very quick.
Good, good. You fill out the, the questionnaire, VAM sends you a questionnaire ahead of time?
Yeah, so we fill out everything out online.
Yep.
And then you just pick your time and date and that's it.
Good. And then did they, did they give you a, um, did they give you the next second dose date?
So some places are pre-scheduling you four weeks, same day, same time, four weeks out. Some are just going to set it up and you'll get an email. Like I get it through my chart and they'll just send you an email saying, you know, three, 28 days, I think it is. Cause I got the Moderna one. You don't really have a choice.
Yeah, you get whatever they give you.
And most people are going to have the Moderna because of the refrigeration.
Yeah, yeah.
But, so some places will schedule you ahead of time, so it's already scheduled for you. Some will just send you an email saying, Sket, you have to schedule for your second shot, or they'll just schedule it for you.
Awesome. Well, that is, that was definitely more encouraging than, uh,
Yeah.
than what I've heard so far, so that's good.
I think real life might help, you know, see how it, the process is.
Yeah, yep.
And it's a lot, like I said, very quick.
Good, very cool. So we, we don't have a date selected yet for, for staff, but like I said, we, we do have our nurses, uh, um, you know, have, they were in that first group, so they, they, I know some of them have already gotten their first, their first dose. The other piece, kind of along the same lines, is working with the town. I know, um, the town is once again trying to secure testing sites so we can continue the, uh, the COVID testing. I know that was very important to teachers when this all started and, um, you know, we're looking to try to utilize Wednesdays again for the, uh, for the testing.
Now, I will say one thing about this whole vaccine rollout, because there was a big hot, um, issue going on with the cave, um, the cave chairman, where a lot of school districts were scheduling their staff at clinics for the vaccine and kind of lock, you know, jogging up the system because they weren't eligible, so then they were going and they were not eligible to get the vaccine, which was causing, I guess, other people not to get the vaccine. I don't know if you heard that from the superintendent?
Yeah.
But this was a big email chain going on the last, like, week, um, with the chairs, that they, some districts had to send out emails to their school district saying, no, don't try to schedule yourself because I guess you can be fined if you show up and get it before your,
Yeah.
before your, when you're supposed to and stuff. But I guess that was causing some issues in some places. I mean, not here, but, um, they were talking about that where staff was, well, teachers, not nurses. I mean, teachers and staff were going and trying to get it under 1A.
Yep. There's that. I didn't think you could, cause I thought you had to be in the, the VAM system and get there.
What they were doing is the districts were scheduling the test for them, but when they were showing up and they were realizing that they were not on the list, because they're not part of 1A, they were sending them away. But I guess they were taking spaces up
Right.
for 1A people.
Yep.
You know, that's what they, the emails were stating.
Yep.
So I don't know how the districts set, scheduled them, you know, what they did, but, I don't know. It's not our district, but,
No.
so, that's all that matters, but just that that's happening around the state apparently.
Joe, can I just jump back to the, um, instructional model for a quick second?
Sure.
When are you, when were you planning on releasing a decision for next Monday?
We're meeting Thursday night. We always meet on, uh, on Thursdays, which is kind of late, but that's when the, the metrics come out and that's what we've been looking at. So we're hoping to see them kind of dip a bit.
So it'll be Friday?
Uh, either Thursday night or Friday, yeah.
And then do you envision, um, kind of going like week by week or, or chunking it out? And like, how do you envision kind of going forward?
I would like to chunk it out. I don't want to, I don't want to be going week by week and, and kind of, you know, dipping in and out.
Okay.
It would be nice to just go forward and, and keep moving forward.
Yeah, it just, you know, everybody's doing their own thing and it's really confusing.
So confusing.
Especially for teachers who, you know, have, live in a different town from where they teach and have kids in a school district that they don't work at. And so, um,
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I appreciate that, Dan.
Joe, thinking, um, two-day hybrid or three-day hybrid? Three-two, three-two, or to start off with a two? Any hints?
Uh, you know, I don't know yet. You know, when we, when we, uh, it's pretty funny. I think all the administrators would agree too, like, going into those conversations, I've really, you know, one of the things I've said from the get-go was, you know, I'm not a public health expert. And, you know, I've really relied on that team, especially Dr. Dion. He's been, he's been really, uh, his insight's been really good. So, um, you know, sometimes I go in with preconceived ideas and come out a little bit different, so, you know, um,
See what Thursday brings.
See what Thursday brings, yeah. I would like, I mean, I think the important thing is, you know, to try to start working back to getting the kids in. I think it's important, I think it's really important for the kids.
Let's, that's what I was trying to see if there was a consensus on the board to see what our thoughts were to guide the superintendent. I know I would like to get the kids back, but I also understand that the two-week timeframe passed, uh, you know, New Year's Eve parties, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I might get this back.
I just, I just think we have to be careful. If any of you watch, you know, the governor at 4:00 or 4:30 when, when he's on, one of the journalists on there said, well, gee, then the CEA, I mean, the teachers have done the same, same thing. The CEA is asking to look at the end of Jan, you know, the end of January. I don't know what to say anymore. You're right, there's so much info out there that it's overwhelming. Overwhelming.
Yeah. And it's, it's tough. I think, you know, Nick hit it on the head when he said, there's so many people doing so many different things. And it's, you know, you've got, you know, quite, quite honestly, you know, you got, um, you know, districts with more spread who have been in full, districts with less spread that have been out for all year. It's, it's really, it's all over the place.
What are some of the things Dr. Dion looks at?
I'm sorry?
What are some of the things that the doctor looks at?
Um, you know, one of the, you know, he looks at, you know, we've talked about the, um, the health metrics, but with, you know, the last time it has really kind of, you know, helped sway the decision was, he talked about what he's seeing in the office. And what he was seeing was as we saw the numbers increasing a little bit, and I was, you know, he was talking about, yeah, but I also had, you know, X amount of people come in today and I sent, you know, I think it was like 96% of them out, you know, for testing. So, um, you know, that's, that's probably the biggest area. And I think, you know, one of the things that we talked about on New Year's Day was, um, you know, if we can see some stability or some flattening or decreasing a little bit in the numbers, it'd be really nice.
Who else meets with you guys?
So it's, uh, it's our school medical advisor, Dr. Dion, Nancy Brought, the public health director, Heather Henning, the public, the town nurse, um, and, um, Joey M. Perigee, who's the, the school nurse advisor, and Jack and I.
Alan, are you guys back then?
Uh, yeah. They, um, for now. They, they said, it was kind of interesting. They said that, um, even if a school gets quarantined, teachers still have to report and teach remotely from their actual classrooms, that they don't want any more teaching at home if it could be avoided at all costs. I don't, I don't know what the reasoning is, I could guess, but they just, unless you're personally quarantined, you have to be there in your classroom.
And you're in full?
What's up?
Is Norwalk in full?
Yes.
Okay.
Full, uh, K-5?
K-5, yeah.
Hybrid, 612?
I'm not sure about the middle and high school. It kind of, I meant the elementary level, so.
My wife's back. She teaches elementary in Trumbull.
And they're back full?
And they're back. Well, the, one day a week, they're, she can either teach remote or go into school. That's Wednesdays. The other days they're in school.
This week they're, she's in?
Yeah, she's starting tomorrow.
The high school's not. The Trumbull High's not. Trumbull High's was remote. That I know for a fact.
She's elementary?
Yeah.
It's going to be tough, Joe. I mean, you've got 65% of the teachers that they just interviewed said, we don't want to go back, we're afraid. So I don't know what to say anymore. It's a crapshoot.
So Region 15's back next week?
Yes.
In full next? K-8 is full and Pomprag is hybrid. But they're remote this week. And I saw New Haven is going back. Uh, New Haven, they're trying to get some kids in, not next Monday, but the Monday after. But they've been out for a while.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think Bridgeport teachers have to report to the classroom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And teach from the classroom.
I, you know, and, and it's really been tricky too, because, um, this has really kind of, this whole thing and, and looking at all the different districts, I think it's one of the things over the last several years where, you know, we are so passionate about local control of education, and I'm 100% on board with that. But it's really, uh, kind of made me question ever so slightly when we see, you know, neighboring towns, you know, one could be completely remote and one could be K-38 in and the high school remote. And, um, you know, it, it's not even regional really anymore. It, it kind of was in the beginning.
In the beginning.
In September, October, you kind of saw people taking like regional approaches. And now I feel like it's just a, I'm doing what I want and they're going to be in, they're going to be hybrid, they're going to be remote. And so, like, when you want the guidance, it's not there.
That's, this is definitely one area where I've wanted the guidance all year.
Yeah. And I don't think we're going to get much guidance since he is going to Washington.
No.
Yeah, the one time we want the state to tell us something.
It would help, it would help for sure. But you're right, and I have a, I have a list, the, uh, you know, the, I sit between the, both the Western Connecticut Superintendent's group and the Southern Fairfield County Superintendent's group. And I keep a running list, cause everybody's emailing each other every day, what mode are you in, whatever. And I just, and it is, it's all over the place. It's all over the place. Who's remote, who's hybrid, who's all in? It really, it really is.
Yeah, we have, um, Norwalk, there's like 2,000 kids at each high school. And a lot of the kids are opting to stay home and do remote. And there's like 200 kids at each high school, 200 out of 2,000.
I mean, we talked about this, Steve, uh, Steve and I talked about this a little bit, and I know Steve has a questionnaire ready to go. Because looking at, you know, do we, you know, we were having the same, I think we were having the same struggles. And you're seeing that all over. I know they're seeing it at Pomprag. You know, kids voting with their feet and not coming in, especially at the, at the high school level. And, you know, so theoretically, but, you know, we'll use Massey. Let's roughly say there's 1,000 kids there. It's more than that, but there's 1,000, 1,000 kids at Massey. Theoretically, in a hybrid, you should have roughly 500 in and 500 on remote. But I think, you know, towards the, uh, as we approached Thanksgiving and as things were, you know, as we were dealing with more and more quarantines, I think we were seeing about 250 to maybe 300 kids. I don't even know if we had by the end, probably not even that many. So, you know, one of the things Steve and I were talking about is sending out a survey to the students to see if you could come in full, hybrid, or remote, what would you, what would you choose? Because if, you know, if, 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 you know, full might only yield 50% of the kids anyway. You know, if, if half the kids, you know, decide to stay remote. So rather than having, you know, you know, six kids in class and 18 kids at home, because 12 are going to be remote, might as well have 12 kids in class for the four days and the 12 kids that were going to stay remote, stay remote. So, um, you know, we'll know more. I think we're going to send that survey out sometime later this week just to see where families are, where kids are at the high school level anyway, in terms of, you know, where they, uh, you know, where they'd want to be.
But we're going to send that to parents too.
Oh, it's going to parents, it's going to parents.
You can have all the kids go, just keep me on remote. You know what I'm saying? You can see the kids all voting remote and the parents are like, uh, yeah, no, I don't think so. My little Johnny is going to be in school.
That was a Freudian slip. Yeah, no, no, it's going to parents.
Parents.
If you sent it to my house, Christopher would have been like, online.
I would be like, oh, god.
They're all going to say, we'll just stay home.
Oh, why?
Can I play devil's advocate here? Why aren't we making the decision for the district? We shouldn't be allowing the teachers to make decisions and we shouldn't be allowing parents and students to make the decisions about what's best for us. We should be running the district. It's not, it's not a democracy. Sorry.
Well, I don't agree. It is, cause if you listen to what Alan just said, Norwalk High Schools have 2,000 kids each and 200 are coming in. So now take what Joe is saying, 1,000 roughly, roughly, 200 come in. I'm just, mm, numbers. If you get five kids in a class, you're still zooming to 15. You're doubling the responsibilities of the teacher. Think about it, that's your jobs, guys. And think about it, your jobs, guys. Nobody's gonna do twice the amount of work and say, oh, you just have to do it.
I, and Jerry, I would agree with you. I don't think they should do double. I think it should be one or the other. But what I'm saying is, why are we giving kids and parents the choice? Why aren't we making the decision for what's best in the district?
Because we can't force them in. Because of the pandemic, we can't force them. That's executive order. You can't force them in.
You can provide some leadership and guidance to the district to say, this is what we're gonna do. And then if they opt out, then they opt out. That's my thing.
Yeah, we gotta, we don't want to start micromanaging the district either.
Well, you can't. With the executive order, there's, there's, there's no way you can't. I mean, the order was signed saying, we can't force them in.
Yeah.
No, but I think it's also important to, I, I think, Joe, what you just said about, you know, if you're gonna have, the, what you, the, the scenario you just laid out is actually super interesting. I never thought about that. That if you're gonna have students who are gonna be remote regardless, and you want to have kids who come in full, to keep that, to, to have the kids who want to be here could be here, and you could still maintain your fifty percent of the kids in. I think that's super interesting, but I think that this is a, like, you know, a once-in-a-century, hopefully it's that rare or rarer, um, once-in-a-century situation. So, at, you know, when we should be taking the leadership role as a district and saying, this is what we want, I think in this very particular and specific instance, you do need a little bit of buy-in from your parents and students and staff to kind of make sure that everybody's comfortable. And that you're getting, and most importantly, that your, your, your students are getting, are, are able to learn from an educational mode that is most beneficial to them. Because that's really what, I mean, that's like the whole thing, right? So.
Not easy.
Joe, don't, don't, to next point, don't we already do that though? We, we offered parents and kids the opportunity to opt out?
We do. They, they can, they can opt out, yeah.
We have that forty-five-day grace period where we continually, if you want back in, you can come back in.
Yeah.
And we're, we're gonna continue to do that.
Yeah.
So theoretically, we still have, they have the ability to say, we're not comfortable. If we were to go full, full in, they could say, we're no longer comfortable, or we now are comfortable, we want to, you know, place our child in or out of school.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's the purpose. This is more information gathering, to succeed. You know, if we got, if, you know, depending on where the numbers come out, if we can do it. Like I said, you know, if we're in a situation like we were in, you know, before Thanksgiving, it would be much better to have the kids who want to be all in, all in, the kids that want to be all out, all out. Because then I think we would have gotten, we would have gotten much, much closer to that fifty percent range than, you know, we were shooting for with the hybrid. As it was, I mean, we had, you know, Steve, I mean, there was classes with three or four kids in them.
Yeah, it was, yeah. There were, there were some classes where, you know, you would, you have three kids in the room and fifteen at home. Now, there was others that were more used, but it really, um, a lot less were coming. So it'd be good to know, you know, the, the biggest concern for, for the high school would be lunch. You know, that, you know, we can't have social distancing, you know, you have too many kids. And that's kind of the rationale behind a lot of the data collection and stuff, so on any given day, how many kids do we have in the school? But also then, what does it mean in the cafeteria for lunches in terms of, we want to be safe. You know, again, it makes sense. The most important thing is what's best for kids. We're, we're losing kids. We're losing them in the sense that, you know, the lack of teacher contact face-to-face is, is, is a struggle for them. Some are thriving in it, uh, but more are, are not. So, the more we can get a lot of those kids in, the more, you know, that we're gonna be able to provide to these, to those students.
Is there a lot of attendance problems with the remote?
Um, a lot of them, I mean, again, I, I defer to the, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot, you're a teacher in the room, but, you know, it's very.
I'm talking about the students, not the teachers.
No, 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 I know, but, you know, the teachers are the ones that see them every day, and, you know, it's getting harder and harder for kids to put on their cameras, you know, and, and interact. A lot of the teachers are frustrated because they feel like, you know, they're, they're doing a lot of the, the talking and, you know, kind of participation, and it's like pulling teeth to get kids to, you know, kind of engage with them from behind screens. Again, not across the board, but, but, you know, it's definitely a struggle on the teachers. They're, they're working hard to create engaging lessons, you know, for, for kids that are still behind the screen. You know, and you're, you're Google Meet, you know, it's, it's different than interacting face-to-face, you know, via any of the kind of screen. And you have, you know, you have to spend a lot of the period, you know, getting kids to turn on their cameras so you can see them. And it, it's just, it's an added layer of work for teachers. I don't know, but I, I, that's what teachers are saying too. It, it, it's a struggle for, for them within. And I think, you know, even just from the social-emotional point of view, I mean, a number of kids that are in need of, you know, assistance, you know, or, or therapy, or things like that are, it's on the increase. You know, we call it, they're, they're not here, they're not getting a lot of that interaction. It's not good for kids. Even our, 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 our seniors, I think of our seniors who are missing, you know, they're gonna see them here. It's tough.
Excellent. Is there a way to make it mandatory for the kids to put on their screen? I mean, I, I don't know. I'm asking, because you're right, that is a struggle.
The expectation is that the camera's on, you know, but it's, how do you, how do you fight that fight? When you're trying to, you know, meet twenty-five kids' needs, and, you know, let's say you have, you know, twenty percent of the kids not turning their screen on, will you, you know, it's pick and choose. And the teachers are having those conversations with the kids and the parents, and, yeah, it's hard. But the expectation is the camera's on.
Now, you can see that those, you know, again, they're, they're teenagers. You can see that they turn their screen off and they're playing on their video game on their phone, and they're just listening, and nobody can see them, so they're just carrying on with what they want. You can, they're teenagers.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
And a lot of the times, you know, they're either in a, their room where their parents are not hovering over them, watching them, or their parents are just not, they're at work and the kids are on their own. So they're gonna goof off because they're teenagers. It's just the fact of life.
But at least, at least at the high school level, that it's, I feel like it's a little bit more on the student. I mean, imagine trying to learn how to multiply, and trying to learn how to, uh, you know, do some of the things in K-one and two, three, four, K-five, I'll just say K-five. Imagine doing those K-five things, you know, over Zoom. I, I just, I couldn't. I, uh, I would love to actually, I don't know if we can make this happen, but I would love to like, see like a second grade or like a first grade Zoom. Like, what even is that?
Come on over now. I have a third grade Zoom going on every day. They're doing division now in math, you could.
Yeah, like, I could, I can't even.
It's interesting.
Think about how, you know, and then this kind of leads into this whole thing about, well, I'll wait for the budget. But this is a whole budgetary thing too, that we're gonna talk about later. But, um, at least at the high school level, you have a little bit of, you know, a little bit more, this is on you, you know, but K-five, man.
Yeah. No, it's difficult. I mean, I, I think that at the high school, I think you have very different levels of maturity. So I agree with you that it's on the student, and you have some students who are like, I'm really great with time management, I'm on it, because they're mature. And then you have other kids who are, just doesn't have, that same maturity level, who are like, I'm gonna be on this computer because I need to do it.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I think you have the same thing with middle school, and I think elementary school is very difficult. I mean, elementary, you know, don't you have second grade?
Joe, it's awful. I, I mean, I, you know, I know the teachers are doing everything they can, but I am, I physically have to be there, present from my second grader. And it's, it's, I don't know how she does it, and she does a tremendous job. And quite frankly, I find myself going at my second grader more than, you know, the, her teacher does. It's just, uh, it is a profound respect that I have now for, for teachers and what they're going through. And, and there is no easy answers for this. But it's, I, I can see it on my child's, you know, in her day-to-day development. All she wants to do is be on her iPad instead of, you know, just interact with kids in her class. It's not, she will be on Zoom all day in class, and then do Zoom after-class with her friends. So it's that part that, um, I feel is most needed, just the, the social-emotional portion that these kids are gonna miss. And, um, why we're discussing kind of the high school part of this is, um, these, since the schools are kind of doing their own things, I mean, do we have, specific to high school, I mean, how are we, you know, gearing these kids, in colleges for that matter, to, because there's such, gonna be such a difference, some schools are in, some schools are out, some schools won't, you know, have been out the entire time. How are those kids going to be looked at by colleges as far as, you know, either college prep or, or entrance? You know, how are they gonna weigh a school district that has a full remote versus a hybrid all year versus a, a kind of a combination? And is that, you know, going to not hurt us, but not just hurt us, but, you know, how do we kind of maybe engage our kids more?
Yeah, I mean, I think the whole admissions process has been, has been thrown out the window this year. I mean, um, you know, they're, they're gonna, they have to look at kids completely differently, completely more holistically. You know, very few kids have taken the S A Ts, um, you know. I mean, I, I don't have any hard data right now to see, but I know, you know, from what I'm hearing, just anecdotally, from what's happened at Masick, we've had some kids that have, you know, seem to be doing okay, getting into some, getting into some, you know, really competitive schools. But it is, it's a, it's a good question. And more, I don't know if it's as big, you know, will it be as big of an issue now as it will, you know, three or four years from now?
Well, I guess that, I mean, are we gonna at some point, I mean, once we get past this, be able to look back and kind of see, you know, whether we were able to keep pace with, you know, um, with the standard versus, you know, maybe we've kind of fallen back?
I, I think, I definitely, first of all, I think there'll definitely be a slide. I mean, I have a hard time thinking there's not going to be one, but, you know, not a huge proponent of, of standardized testing for kids. But I think it is gonna be important when we get out of this to get a, a baseline of where our kids are. It doesn't, doesn't necessarily need to be, you know, you know, six days of S-P-A-C tested, but, you know, there's definitely, we're gonna have to, we have some work to do, you know, when we get out of this, to see where our kids are, and, you know, how far behind are they as we move forward?
Do you use like games web in Monroe?
Uh, what, what are, what do we use?
Star assessment?
The star assessments? And those are relatively quick hitters. How long do they take?
About twenty minutes.
Yeah.
Where they all adapted, or they're from the college or whatever, where they are. So they don't pick out a lot of the structure behind it, but, but, it can be very robust, they do a lot of the structure for us.
Oh, yeah.
So it's like, they have to think that in years, so we're able to show, wanting to be in a bad, on a bad.
But it's interesting, you know, the point you bring up, Jeff, because, and, and Joe, as you were talking about the slide, you know, I, uh, I can't remember where I saw it, um, but last week there was an article, I think it might have been Ed Week, that, and the title was, you know, "The looming education crisis." I was like, what, wow, what more crisis are you gonna say? And the opening paragraph says, you know, when the COVID crisis is over, the education crisis is just gonna be starting. It was really jarring to kind of sit with that for a second. And it's, it's, it's a, you know, I thought, you know, why talk in such hyperbole? But I don't know if it really is, because, you know, and I said, I've said this multiple times, you know, imagine being a first grader who went out in March through June, and this current year is your second grade year. And now, we were just, uh, Alan, Steve and I were walking up the hallway, and I said to him, I said to both of them, I said, you know, I hope that next, this upcoming fall, this upcoming September twenty-twenty-one, we can at least start all in. Even if we're wearing masks, at least we could have, you know, everybody in the school building, based on how all the vaccines come and all that kind of stuff. But, you know, what is our, what is, what does third grade mean in September twenty-twenty-one? You know, what does, you know, the, the high school's a little bit different, but when you go, when you get down to K-eight, you know, what does, what does that mean for someone who's been doing this for, um, a student who's been learning like this for eighteen months or so? And so, unfortunately, as to Joe's point, that was kind of answering your question, Jeff, I think this is just, um, the, the repercussions of this, we're not even really in that yet. We're, we're, that's just gonna start next year.
I think we're gonna have a lot of work to do when this is over. I think one of the other things though, and, you know, I wanna talk to all the principals, but, you know, this is definitely, you know, we've, we've talked for years about the, the power standards. Um, and I think this has forced our, our teachers and the collaboration time that they have to identify what is essential, what is the essential learning that, you know, these kids need to be successful moving forward. And, you know, really hitting those, those key things is, is crucial right now.
Is the state gonna try to do S-P-A-C testing, or they haven't said?
They've, so far, they've indicated that they would be, they would do testing this year. And again, I think part of it is, I, I think they're, you know, not so much to, you know, try to compare districts or any of that, but to help districts kind of get a baseline.
Oh, yeah.
I'd rather we get our own baselines from our own testing and, you know, tailor the, uh, individualize the, uh, the learning a lot better. I think we were much better at it than the state. You know, it's frustrating because it's a lot more time consuming. She up?
Sorry, just, um, that's back, it's, and, and we have, that's what's happening, because it will be happening.
And what happens if we're not in?
They are working on figuring out how to do it remotely.
You could do it remotely.
Yep.
Because I mean, I know like at least my sister-in-law who lives in Naperville, Illinois, they have not stepped foot in a school building since they went out last March. And they don't plan on going back anytime soon. And she was like, listen, I think we're gonna take off for like a month to go to Florida because the kids are not, don't have school since March. You know, you know, so, I mean, so you have school districts who have not stepped foot in a school building for now almost a year. Not just, you know, not just Connecticut and other states.
But the way you could do it remotely is like screen sharing programs, like if you want to hear a student, like a third, fourth grade student read. Share the screen within the paragraph and then you could do it that way.
That should be interesting. Because if they're remote and it's really a state test, then your parents or whoever has to have sort of. Like the bandwidth to do it because I remember last year, not all of them, but there were kids who had issues logging on to take the AP exam. That was having computer issues and that was just, you know, those kids who happened to be in that class taking the AP. That's not like every kid in the district trying to take that remotely from home. That should be very interesting.
And those are most capable kids in the, in the district.
Right, those are the most capable kids, your high schools who are taking AP exams and there was issues. Not with them, with the computer and stuff and get logging in and submitting, there was a huge issue when they tried to submit that it failed, so. I can't imagine what it would be like with, you know, the third to eighth graders taking this. I mean, does the parent need to sit there and then administer, help administer it? Then is that a true test? Because is the parent going, I don't know if that's really the right answer? So it's not, you know, but those are the things. So it could be that a parent is helping and it's not a true reflection of how the child is doing because the child needs help. These are gonna be very interesting times.
Yeah. Anything else on that? Um, Darlene, do you want to talk a little bit about our stat update?
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Um, I'm sorry, this didn't get put in the packet, but with the break it didn't get put in before, so. I'll start with the enrollment, we have, um, to date, we have four hundred fifty free students, um, with specialized programs. One new student registered, one new, uh, one student was withdrawn. Four students were referred to, um, special education and were made eligible. And I, I included a high cost number in here, we, um, it's not, it's not a program that's been solidified yet. But it is, it is a student with a, um, moving in with a significant, um, IP, so we're, we have to, you know? Get all the documentation first and, and decide what we're going to do there. And then for finances, um, I'm going to highlight just the lines that have changed this month, so. If you look at the first line outside agencies and we combine that with tuition private, I'm gonna talk about those two lines together. So now that we're almost halfway through the year, we, we're taking a closer look at, um, you know, our programs, our student needs. And we made some adjustments to the holds funds because remember in the beginning of the year, we put those holds fund in place, which were estimates of what programs might cost. So we made some adjustments based on what we know today. And also in those two lines, um, there was, um, some invoices that were hitting the wrong lines, so. For instance, um, in outside agencies, we, we transferred one, a couple of invoices to tuition private. So that you'll see that there's, there's a little bit of change in the numbers there, but, um. As we always say in special ed, it, you know, it changes constantly and this is what we know today, um, so. That's the most accurate, um. Tuition private summer, that was just a late invoice, it didn't come in until after we had, um, you know, Ron had closed out last year's budget. And, um, we had zeroed out the tuition, um, summer tuition. Let's see, independent evaluations, this, you could, you notice that there is some more money in there from last, um, last time? I think last, uh, last time showed a zero. So what we found was that we did have some money left in the IEDA, IDEA fund. So, um, the grant and you, it's a two-year grant and you have to expend the money from the first year by a certain time. So we had money in there that we had to expend, um, for, and we, we had transferred it into outside evaluations. Because last year we went over, um, quite a bit in that line, so. Tracy caught that and we, and we, um, we just kind of spent, spent down those funds first, so we journaled back this eighteen thousand dollars. And we took it out of the IDEA grant. Um, and then the last one is transportation specialized system wide. Um, again, it's Tracy caught this, um, as she's doing invoices for transportation, she noticed that there was. One of our carriers charged us, um, five extra days, so it was a, you know, it's a small savings, but, um, but she did catch it, so it's a twelve hundred dollar, um, savings there. Questions?
Thank you, Darlene and Ron, I know they meet weekly, I think it's one of the important things to constantly go over this, because it is changing, it is in flux all the time. I appreciate the work that they keep doing and I know. It's getting more complicated as the year goes on and as things, as things change, but.
Yeah, and as I have said before.
It's important that they continue to work together.
As I've said before, it's always, we always find that, you know, after that first half of the year, that's that turning point, so. You know, things, things are bound to change, hopefully not too much with the certain situations that we're in, but.
Joe, do you have anything else?
No.
All right, we will move on then to old business, we have our twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget workshop. In your, um, area, um, we had asked for last time the different scenarios.
Yep.
The different configurations, so to speak, of using the different buildings. And this is right from that ad hoc report that was done in two thousand fifteen.
Yeah. Yeah, so at the, at the last meeting, I said, I, I, I know there was some question about this, um, so I said I'd share out some of the work of the ad hoc committee, um. You know, I wasn't a part of that committee, but, um, they developed almost, if you look at this, there's almost twenty different scenarios or, or school configurations. I don't know how helpful it is to the conversation we're having, uh, because this, this. This work was done at a time when our population was actually decreasing, we were doing it in two thousand fifteen as, as we were going down. So we were looking at efficiencies and ways that we could ultimately, you know, um, you know, save money and that's how we arrived at the current configuration that we're at. But you'll see there's a lot of very, um, interesting configurations here, it's definitely important to keep an eye on it. You know, we've looked at our elementary schools, which is where we know if we have any impact right away, that's where we're, that's where we're gonna see it first. We do have some room to grow, we do have some classrooms, um, we do have some classrooms that have been, you know, repurposed as, you know, reading intervention rooms that if we had to. Go back and make them, and I think we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, if we had to go back at, um, you know, and, and repurpose them back into, you know? Regular education classrooms, if the situation demanded, we do have some opportunity for growth there, but. You'll see, there's a, there's a number of different scenarios here, um, you know, that, that the ad hoc committee looked at. A one, the very first one is the one that we're, we're currently living. You know, it's, it's not always, first of all, anything where it's over a hundred percent, you can almost kind of ignore, because you can't have a building. You know, with occupancy over, over a hundred percent. There's some, there's also a, a number of other ones, a lot of these didn't, you'll notice there's a couple of asterisks on the bottom. No allowance for, um, alternative education, no allowance for the Board of Ed, well, we know we've already moved all over here. So these are a little bit different now, we've taken up two classrooms here at Masick for that. The ones that don't, um, you know, that don't, um. You know, allow for the Board of Ed would, you know, would not be feasible. There's a lot of other ones here with some, with some really weird configurations that, you know, when you look at the percentages from a mere. Number standpoint, like, oh, that looks great, we can, we can do this, but, you know, it is wildly inefficient to have. You know, a configuration with like five to seven, um, because of certification. Most, you know, now you have, most folks are certified K through six and then they're seven through twelve, you know, based on a, um, you know, based on a subject. So when you get a building with, you know, five and seven or six and seven, even six to eight, you know, provides some, some challenges for us. But when you get buildings like that, it becomes wildly inefficient, you know? World language, which starts in seventh grade would be, you know, really difficult to try to run in, in some of those scenarios. So, I apologize, I didn't start, you know, if you look in that second column, the first column has all the different, you know, scenarios, scenario A one, A eight. Again, I wasn't there for the original committee, so I imagine there must have been other scenarios in between there that they, I don't know why it's not just A through whatever, but. You know, in that second, um, that second one, that second column kind of tells you, okay, uh, that's our current configuration now, that's. Masick, nine through twelve with STEM in the building, Jockey Hollow at six to eight, Fawn Hollow K five, Monroe well, pre K to five, Stephanie K to five. Now, the next one down would have been nine through twelve without STEM. Uh, and then six to eight with STEM, um, at, at Jockey Hollow. If you look at that, you know, Masick would have been, you know, um, you know, vastly, vastly underused. So there's all, there's all kinds of different configurations there. I have more detail on a lot of these, but I don't know how helpful this is for the conversation that we had at the, at the last meeting, because again. A lot of this work was being done as population was decreasing, looking at ways that we could, um, close a building. I know there was, at the time, there was, there was conversation of closing Monroe Elementary and, um, you know, and coming up with all kinds of different configurations. Each of these scenarios, if you go on the, if you go on our, um, on the website, underneath the Board of Ed, it's the first thing that comes up is the ad hoc. Study and if you go to, if you click on that and then go to, uh, final report, it comes up with these scenarios and then it gives all the pros and cons. You know, the ad hoc committee, I think with the help of, uh, the administrators, I know Jack and I were talking about, remember, um, we were sitting actually here. Going through the different scenarios and going through, you know, what were the, the benefits and drawbacks of each, of each scenario. And as you read through them, you can see some just jump right out at you, you can't have, you know? You can't have a high school that's at a hundred and eleven percent capacity or another school with that kind of capacity, some of them. You know, we talked about bringing Chalk Hill back up online and we know, you know, right now that would be a pretty significant lift.
Yeah, and I would have to say that the six to eight with STEM at.
Jockey Hollow.
Would be over the hundred percent at this point.
Yeah, yeah, the, and yeah, these numbers were, um, yeah, they're from five years ago and I think it was projecting, you know? More decreases, which did happen, but never anything that, we've said all along, I forget what the, what's the magic number, Jack, at, to get six to eight at Jockey Hollow?
About seven hundred.
About seven hundred.
Yeah.
Even seven hundred will be tight with three grades.
Yeah.
It's very different to operate, although we operated at seven twenty, it was only two grades.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's a lot easier to manage, uh, configurations with two grades. Or only two grades to have to, uh, to have to schedule, uh, than if you break that same, you know, seven hundred twenty or in our case, what would be. Over seven fifty into three grades, much more difficult to schedule and the space would be.
And the building was designed, it was initially designed as a two, two-grade building, it was initially designed as a seven and eight school. Which makes it problematic when you, even now with having, you know, it's three floors, but, you know, the first floor has no. I never understood the building, you know, the first floor.
Showcased me when I was there, come on, I was there on the first floor.
And it's about it, there's no classrooms on the first floor.
Me and Ansis, that was it.
Yeah, you have, you, you, all your administrators on the floor with no kids.
And if, and if memory serves, when we were going through this last time, like I think there was, and I don't know where I found it last time. But if you remember, there was a significant difference between what their projections were to where we were, like, it was like. A substantial difference, um, you know, in the number of students, I'm, I, I want to say like three hundred or more, so it's. I think part of it was just getting to, did they have the scenario for a, you know, pre K one. Two, three and four, five scenario, which it doesn't look like they did.
Yeah, I know at one point, you know, one of the more serious conversations was before STEM, or was putting pre K on the, on that side of the building. But I think pre K, was it pre K and K?
There was a, there was that, there was the pre K and Board of Ed.
Yeah.
There was pre K and K discussed.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, pre K and K, yeah.
Yeah, they looked at like every possible scenario.
Yeah, I mean, some of these things.
Even if it was ridiculous, they just put it out there.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I saw this, one of the ones that jumped out at me had like. I think it's a J, which has like Jockey Hollow as K seven, Fawn Hollow at K seven, Stephanie at K seven, then closing Monroe and entry. I mean.
But Jockey Hollow isn't even, you couldn't even get that passed through inspections for K?
I don't, yeah, you couldn't.
No. What I do find interesting about this chart though is C and down, C through L, all start Masick. At seventh or eighth grade.
Yeah.
I mean, I was, so I was looking at C actually because, I mean. Is it better to have STEM? You know, back at Jockey Hollow, but then you have eighth grade here, I mean, is that? I know like regional districts, like they kind of do. I don't want to say weird things, but they do different things with, uh, smaller regions, like, like, um, Chapag. Region like twelve, I think, I don't know, but they have different configurations because they have space, I remember during the. When we were coming back in the fall, some, one of the administrators in that region was interviewed on WTNH. And they were like, oh, are you worried about like coming back in fall? And they were like, we only have X amount of kids and we have this huge building, like, you know, we have a class of eight. So everyone could have two tables and we'll be good to go, right? So, but they can do configurations with that, with that number of students, but, um. Like eight, twelve at Masick, like for a, a district our size, like would that be?
I don't know anyone close to our size that has that kind of configuration and the only thing is, I don't, were you around?
Well, I was around.
That was the original plan.
Yeah.
That was the original plan before STEM.
Yeah, that didn't go.
I was just talking, I was just talking about it.
That was the parents.
That was.
That was the original plan, the original plan before STEM happened, when they closed Chalk Hill, was that this was gonna be an eight to twelve up here. And the parents went crazy, absolutely crazy and they are like, absolutely not, you're not putting my eighth grader.
Daughter's not riding with you.
In the high school and then when we, when they came up with the STEM plan, everybody was like, oh, okay, we can put our six to eighth grader in the STEM wing at the high school.
So it's, yeah.
It, it was gonna complete, everybody was all in favor of that, but telling the eighth graders they had to come up here was a no-go.
But was the eighth grade gonna be part of like?
No, it was gonna be eighth grade academy.
It was gonna be eighth grade academy.
Right, like it was an eighth grade academy.
Yeah, it was, no.
Yeah, I don't think you want to go there, Nick.
It would be larger too, I mean, STEM is not now.
Let me know when you're looking for any super tech.
Yeah, no, that, that was, that was, that was the original plan.
Yeah, I mean, Alicia must have been in fifth grade then and I remember having friends who had kids in eighth grade and what, oh my gosh.
It got ugly.
They were very passionate to say, it was a very passionate plea to not have.
Now, again, we're talking, you're talking, that was probably around two thousand ten. Is there a different sentiment ten years later?
Who knows?
I don't know.
I mean, no, exactly, I mean, that was, that was an initial, that was the first thing, we're, oh, we want to move eighth grade to Masick. And then everybody was upset about it, then STEM, you know, got proposed and people were on board. Now, who knows, maybe you're right, maybe now it would be very different, I, I have no idea.
All I can say is that ten years, well, almost eleven years ago was not.
No, I was just, I was just looking at the spreadsheet and I was, you know, I, I did what Joe did, I Xed off all the ones over a hundred and then you kind of go down, the certification ones, that's a great point, those get Xed off and. You know, C was kind of, you know, the one that showed like the least disruption and also the least cost, right? Because if we go back to the whole K seven at Jockey Hollow, at that point, we, we should investigate Chalk Hill, because it would be millions of dollars to get up.
Millions.
Um, whatever, but, um. And the only other one I see is that A eight C, which moves. Board of Ed and pre K here and puts STEM back to Jockey Hollow, but I don't think that that ninety-four percent is a legit number.
Yeah, much more now than we have.
Yeah, we're talking this, there's a significant enrollment variance here.
Yeah, from when this was done, so.
From when this was done, I, like I said, it's probably, and I couldn't find it, I kind of quickly tried to go on. I want to say it's a good three hundred kid difference, maybe even more, so it's significant.
I, I, you know, I think this is really good information, um, I completely understand the eighth grade. Eighth grade feelings, I don't know if that has changed, but I think they're still. We still have to think about what we're gonna do. Because, you know, and I'm gonna say this the rest of the budget season, you're, you're gonna get tired of me saying it through, through, through May, but. Ron's really gonna get tired of me saying it at the board finance meetings, but we're at twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five projected enrollment this year.
You're gonna do is out of school, Nick, you got the money? I'm not gonna tear sixty schools, baby.
Can I postate the check? I mean, that, that's the facts, that's just, that's just what it is and if we're there now, five years from now.
Well, and didn't they just change zoning for allowing apartments above commercial?
Above commercial buildings.
So that can have an impact on certain schools.
And we did do that study, when we did the study last November, we actually asked them to include those proposals of those apartments. And if you remember, and Alan is probably shaking over there, but one of the things that came back in that study was that that would have very little impact in our schools. And we were like, what do you mean it's gonna have very little impact? So everybody was kind of annoyed last year when we had that report to try to get some sort of guide on how much of, of, of fact that would have in our schools and.
What would that affect more, Stephanie?
Yeah.
Uh, from what I can tell, mostly Stephanie, because you have this.
It's more like twenty-five grade, yeah.
That commercial zone is more of the old school, three-family houses, where we could technically do that. I don't, I don't know of other places. I don't either, I'm one eleven, you're right, Jeff, I don't think there's any on thirty-four in short run.
Stephanie's probably the one school that impacted the most.
Right, I thought that one, the twenty-five project was the most viable from what I understood.
When does that go into effect?
Oh, I, I don't know. Oh, it was just, I think it's next, I mean, they just approved it, yeah.
They just approved it, right, so like pretty much.
Pretty much it will just, yeah.
Like kind of.
Yeah, mixed. Joe, I think it would help certain members of the board, can you go over certification levels, I mean, I'm wondering if they think like, not every teacher can teach. Tech Ed is certified K through twelve, but I think it would help if you went through the different certification, just quick.
Yeah.
So everyone understands, not everyone can float.
Yeah, 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 I mean, the, the biggest floaters are, you know, Tech Ed, which would be K through twelve, and if I screw this up. Jack or Mike or Sheila, please jump in, uh, you know, music, PE, health, uh, those all generally are. um, generally tend to be, um, you know, K twelve certifications.
Special education.
What was the other one?
Special.
Special, special education is another one, guidance. The classroom teachers at the elementaries is K, K through six, you can teach, you can teach everything. You know, once you get to, once you get to seventh grade, then you need a certification to teach English, you need a certification to teach, teach history, social studies. You need a certification to teach um math, need a certain, certification to teach, once you get to the world languages, you need, you know, Spanish is one. World language is another, probably the, the most difficult one at the high school is when you get to the sciences, cause it's not a nine twelve science certification. It's uh, it's biology, it's chemistry, it's physics, um, or it's the, the general science certification, which is probably the most limiting right now, but um, yeah, that gets, that gets really tricky when you start.
My point for asking, that's the problem, when you change.
The configurations.
The configurations of the schools.
I totally agree with uh, you know, G and H, cause I had those as, you know, oh, let's look at them, but then when you talk about five, seven at Jackie Hollow, you run into big certification problems. That's gonna cost you more money.
Oh, yeah.
So, no, I totally am bored with that.
Uh, Joe, so the, going over these scenarios, I think, um, but do you have a measurement in mind? If we continue to see the growth that we, we are now, where you say, okay, we need to do a, either another scenario study? Or we, you know, do you feel like we need to potentially do something now and start the ball rolling? Or do you feel it's necessary?
I'd like to, quite honestly, I'd like to see where, where we start out next year. I think, you know, I, I, I don't know how much of what we're experiencing right now is a result of everything that's going on and the flight out of the, the cities into the, into, into the suburbs, um, especially New York City. You know, so I'd like to kinda see, are these numbers gonna, gonna hold up? And if they do, then I think we need to, you know, I think we need to get, we need to start acting.
We gotta prepare for kindergarten, because like you were saying before, a lot of parents probably held their kindergarteners back because of this.
We'll have, we'll have some good information.
When does that come out?
About a month, February.
February?
Yeah. Yeah.
But I would say if you see yourself in a situation where all of a sudden, you know, you're in September, and now you're in uh two thousand twenty-five or even two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Numbers, yeah.
Numbers. You, we're gonna need to start the ball rolling, because it's not as simple like, oh, let's meet and, you know, by next school year, we'll have it, you know, it decided, it's going to take, I mean, this report, when this happened, what was it, three years?
Three year process, yeah.
Right, so it's not gonna be something like you can do in a couple of months, so you may, I would say, if you're in a situation where you're seeing those numbers, continuing to increase, you're gonna need to start in the fall, getting the ball rolling, because you're gonna need the three years of preparing to make a decision as to where you go in the, in three years from now. And you'd probably need to hire Fletcher Thompson and.
Oh, I don't, don't even give it.
Malone and McRae.
The money, the buildings are gonna have to be retrode one, one way or another.
Mm-hmm.
So the bid process and the whole, yeah.
Yeah.
Retrode for, for what?
Well, it depends your grade configuration.
Oh, yeah, right.
I mean, you know, it depends what you have to do to get the schools ready for whatever you're moving.
Right.
That was one of the issues coming here, Nick, when we looked at, um, you know, pre K, K was a, was a very viable alternative at one, one point, but we were gonna have to retrofit all those, you know, putting in lower sinks, changing all the bathrooms.
Getting a playground.
Yeah, yeah.
We needed a playground.
Yeah, so, I mean, and hopefully it won't be as, I don't wanna say time consuming, but hopefully if you're using, let's say, the same company, a lot of that data they already have, because they've walked the buildings, they've looked at all those, you know, all, all those different areas, they already have all those specs of all the buildings that they've done before. It's hopefully gonna just need to be an updated type of thing.
Yeah.
You know, so if you've replaced the boiler and they had a boiler on the list, well, they may need to update that. But they're also gonna need to look at where, what your different configurations are in elementary, middle, and high school, because my guess is those have somehow shifted too.
Joe, have you talked to any superintendents that kinda seen the same kinda trends that we're seeing as far as an influx? A dramatic influx in students and how they.
In the Western Connecticut Superintendent's Group, I think, I mean, I don't think anyone is, you know, talking about building, you know, looking at reconfigurations just yet, but um, I think, you know, Newtown, Trumbull, uh, Brookfield, the ones that I, I've talked to most frequently, they've all seen a similar, uh, similar bump. I don't know, Alan, if, if you saw it, I would imagine, you know, there's, they're definitely seeing it, you know, down county.
Yeah, we've had, we had a surge.
Yeah.
Fairfield is busting at the seams.
Yeah. Fairfield's right on the, you know, it's right on the communal line, it's.
Yeah, I'm sure, I don't know, I don't know for a fact about Westport, you know, Stanford Greenwich, those are three very, very different towns. But I'm sure that they've all had surges in their own ways, but I don't know for a fact, I do know Fairfield is up there.
Yeah.
I would just be curious more, I know Trumbull has seen a very si- uh, similar housing surge that we have.
Yeah.
Even maybe more so. I'd be just cur- curious as to specifically Newtown, Trumbull. Whether or not they're, you know, obviously in the same situation as us, but if they had started talking about plans to.
I'll talk to both of them this, this week, this Thursday and Friday, so.
I thought at one time, and this was just going back a few years, and I don't know if they ever went through it, I thought like Newtown was highly considering closing an elementary school.
I, I think they were.
Like five years ago, I don't know if they ever did, because they were going down, I'm not sure if they did, so they may have some capacity, cause they were actually looking at closing the building, if they never did, they probably have, and I don't know this, capacity. But they also have a configuration where their five, six school is separate from their seven, eight school.
Yeah. Yeah.
And Weston is like that too, but they're, they are, I think, quite lower enrollment than Monroe, but they, they are K, K four, right? Or K two?
Wilton does K two, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, K two, three, five, six, eight, so they, but they're all on one.
Both those districts, everyone, the, 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 all the schools are together.
Yeah.
I thought Brookfield does a, like a, like a K one, two, three school.
I don't think so, I don't think Brookfield does.
I thought they were that type of configuration.
I had that.
But didn't we also talk, if I remember correctly, wasn't there also discussion about like, the more transitions a student makes, you start to?
That was part of the, actually, that was, as I looked at some of the, um, and I remember Jim Augustine talking about this, when, um, he was, he was pretty intimately involved in the ad hoc study. But that was a, a big conversation was, you know, to try to limit the amount of transitions that kids have over the, over the three years.
And I think that's why you see some of those gaps in the, in the plans, like they're, they go over, because I think some of those were those.
Yeah.
You're right, Joe, I remember that.
Forgot about her.
Yep, yep.
I think that's a good, I just, you know, I, you kinda answered my question, I was just kinda wondering what the plan was gonna be, but I think looking at getting, you know, October, or uh, when we, October one is when we pull the like official enrollment.
Yep.
Looking at October one of this upcoming year. And seeing, you know, I'll take that number and put it up against this median projection, and if we're off, if we're higher than we should have been, then I think that, that's what we'll take, and it's definitely gonna be a time to dive into this.
Yep, absolutely.
Now, I don't know about any of the miles, but there was a scenario X, and I don't know what happened through M to X. But scenario X was that you were closing Monroe, Allen, Stephanie, and Vaughn Hollow was gonna be K to three, Chalk Hill four to five, Jackie Hollow six to eight, and MASIC nine to twelve with STEM. That was scenario X that's on the website.
A lot of movement.
Yeah.
Well, again, you're talking millions of dollars for Chalk Hill renovation, but that was sort of the scenario, you had a K three school, and then you had a four, five school.
Like all in one campus, if I remember right.
Yes, I think that was the thought.
I think that was their thought.
Everybody was beyond one campus.
And it wasn't necessarily, it was just Jim Augustine, if I remember correctly, just wanted every possible scenario. Even if it was absurd, throw it out there, you know, so that's why there's so many options here.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
The only other piece I have on, on the budget workshop, and I don't know if anyone has any other questions, um, I know we, we do have the uh, under new business, the draft of the capital plan, just to kind of, for everyone to preview, but, and before we get to that, I just, you know, a couple pieces on, uh, to share on, on the budget workshop, but you know, I know that there's some sticker shock to the six point one nine percent. And, you know, we know, I think we all knew going into that, this year, that that number was going to be high, but especially with the furlough days. I just wanna, you know, remind the people at home, you know, that the furlough days resulted in savings of, you know, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in the district, so, you know, if we didn't have to make that up next year, um, you know, the increase would have been about, almost a full point lower, you know, coming into, we'd still be at about five and a quarter percent. But the, the other piece that, you don't have to move down. You know, I, I just keep going back to, you know, this slide, cause this is the one that, um, you know, talks about our, our enrollment, and I know this is, you know, good segue to where we just were. You know, as I said, currently where we are right now, if you go back to, you know, fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, when we were around the same, you know, we'll go with fifteen, sixteen, which we're a little bit lower. You know, about, we have about twelve staff members more, this budget does include, you know, three and a half new staff members. We lost nine certified staff members last year, nine certified staff positions, I should say. We did, we saved everybody, um, you know, through, through furloughs and whatnot, that we were able to save the, the current teachers, but we did have nine certified positions that, um, that we lost last year, eight teachers and one, uh, you know, one instructional leader. So, you know, if you take, you know, the three and a half teachers that were looking to start to recoup, um, to, to get back, you know, that's, we budgeted at about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so if you couple that with the furlough days, you know, if we hadn't had to make up, if we hadn't had to make up that, if we didn't have increasing enrollment and looking to add, um, you know, these three and a half teachers, you know, we'd be looking at about a, a four point seven, you know, percent out of the gate, just to, just to keep it in, uh, keep in perspective. I know it's, I know it's, uh, you know, it's a big number, I, I know we expected a big number this year, but just to give it some perspective. So, I don't know if anyone had any other questions about the, uh, in the budget or anything.
I just wanted to make one comment off of what you just said too, and this is what I was gonna say before, that, you know, I am slightly concerned about actually what we have in this budget going into next year to be able to, um, absorb the students that we will be getting back. I'm not saying that because of COVID, there are gonna be regular ed students that will be going into special ed, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying learning first and second grade and multiplication and different things, um, over eighteen months, we've, it, it hasn't happened. In, you know, everyone's comparing this to, you know, nineteen eighteen and the Spanish school and everything, but it's, it's, you can't compare, I mean, the technology, the whole world is different, so, you know, one thing about this budget is that, as it starts to go through the process, and when we get to referendum and we'll see what happens, you know, do we have enough in there to make sure that when these kids come back, God willing, that everyone can get back in the buildings in, in the fall? You know, how are we gonna deal with that? And that's gonna take, it's gonna take more money, and, um, if, if, if we don't have it in the budget, it's gonna have to come from someplace else, and then what else is gonna be hit, because we have to take money to look at the students that we have coming back to us, so, you know, a very, very strange year, but we have to try to prepare for what's gonna happen.
Joe, any recalculation of that six point one nine with retirements, um, decreasing the, the settlement payment, any of those?
We haven't, we haven't done that yet, um, you know, we can start to look at, we haven't started to look at the retirements yet, I don't think there's gonna be a huge savings there. Um, because this is a retirement year, so they get the, uh, the, um, the sick day buyout and the, uh, and the, uh, the ten thousand dollar.
The incentive, yeah.
Uh, but we can start, I think we can start, uh, you know, we can start putting that together. I did get a call and play phone tag today with the attorney on the, on the settlement, so hoping to get some more information on that soon.
Now that, so just so everybody knows, retirements had to be in by December thirty-first, we're past that date, so we have not gotten any new retirements than we've seen, which is three teachers, right?
Three today, yeah.
Yeah. We have not gotten anything.
We are going to extend it again like we have.
Oh, yeah, we've extended it in previous years too, I mean, to ask, but I mean, we have three right now.
Understood.
I mean, you'll, we'll maybe get another couple. But again, Jerry, can you explain it? Somebody asked me and I tried to explain it. There is this gap, right, where the state was not hiring teachers, so you have, there's a huge hole where there's teachers who are not at retirement age, because there was a time in the state during certain years that there was no hires, can you explain that? Cause I tried to.
Yes, well, it's a few things. If, if you look at administration first, certain schools would say a teacher could not go for their old ninety-two, or their old ninety-three. Now, I know that sounds illegal, can't tell people what to do, but they won't encourage you to go for administration, so that's why we had the shortage of superintendents and the shortage of principals and vice principals. Teaching was the same, same way, it was discouraged, especially with your shortage areas, and I don't know if you guys know what that is. Shortage areas, Joe helped me, tech ed, Spanish, uh, tech ed, world language. Math?
ELO, math, special education.
There's, there's a list, so if you were going for one of those, you were highly recruited, but like lawyers, and if there's any lawyers out there, I don't mean this the wrong way. Schools weren't recruiting a social studies teacher, a math teacher, a science teacher. They were looking for those areas that they had to fill, so I, I don't wanna use the word track, but they were tracking you toward a certain way. When I went to Central, I know this was a long time ago, we started out with a hundred, but sixteen of us made it through. That's kind of what happened ten to fifteen years ago in Connecticut with the rest of, of academics, if you would. That people were trying it, wasn't for them, they brought in the internships, as you all probably know. The internships were a way to get certified in eighteen months, Joe, am I saying that right?
Yeah.
So in eighteen months, you can go to Sacred Heart, Fairfield U, there were a few other places, and you can join their internship, but even that, the success rate on that wasn't high, Donna, so yes, there was this, this gigantic, I'd say it was, somebody told me it was between eight to twelve years, where there weren't a lot of hiring, there just wasn't a lot of job openings, so we're, we're either heavy or we're low. Now, I know, Joe, we did a survey with Jim Augustine of where we stood with the thirty plus and the ten and under, I don't know if you've looked at that or if it matters.
I could pull that up, yeah, we get, we do a, uh, we, we do a freedom of information request every year to TRB to get, to get the information, so I, I can pull that, I have that handy, I could share it with you.
But, I mean, there, it, they're really using a, a lot up there.
But there's a gap, yeah. No, no.
So where are we, Joe, in the center now?
Uh, I think there's a lot around my age.
Okay, that's, well, to me, that's the center, you're, you're still young to me, Joe, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, and there's not a lot between, I don't know, Marie's retiring, so, there's not a lot between Maria and I.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So you're, you're peo- you have people who are still God, when is it, twenty thirty?
They're twenty thirty-two.
Twenty thirty-two, so you have people who are still significantly like ten plus years away, and you don't really have those top people that you have at retirement age.
And, you know, the whole retirement thing is not easy, you just can't work eight years and say, I retire, you have to invest in. And then as you retire, you get penalized for retiring early, so there's this whole process that I'm not sure if you guys understand, you just can't wake up one morning and say, I'm outta here. Well, you could, but you'd lose a ton of money.
Right.
There's all kinds of thought process.
Right, and, and can you explain that? Cause you're better than anybody else at explaining the whole retirement thing.
Retirement, I mean, you know, usually the person is gonna do thirty-five years, I went out at thirty-four and I won't mention what, I, I went out at thirty-four for a few reasons. Right now, Joe, we offer the retirement package, help me out, odd even?
Yes, odd even.
No, we usually offer it every year, it was a set. It was a set of questions. We usually secretly, if we want to get our money lower, we offer the package every year.
The package is a little bit different.
Was the off year. So I had asked the Board of Ed to let me stay another year.
Oh, you didn't ask us.
Oh, I can show you the letter, to let me stay, to let me stay another year and give me the retirement for 35 years. And no, you can't. So I got hit for 2% for the rest of my life. So I retired at 56 and a half, and you get hit 2% the rest of your life through. Now, with Joe's talking about the package, you get four payments, is it okay if I say this out loud?
Yeah, it's part, it's all part of the contract.
Okay. So you get four payments of $10,000, right, Joe?
Yep.
And then you get paid for your sick days from 100 to 160?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's that 60?
If you have over 100, you get paid every day over 100.
So when I walked out, and I'll share it, because it's all part of Freedom of Information, I walked out with a $45,000 package, but it's not all at once. They don't hand you that money all upfront. But what kills you is the years you leave early, that's the rest of your life.
It's, there's two, two ways not to take a hit. Correct me if I'm wrong, 35 years or 60 years old. So if you're at 35 years, like John Batista started when he was 22, so he was out at 57. He didn't take a hit at all, you know, going out at 57, he got 70%. If you, if, let's just say you had 25 years, but you were 60 years old, you, it's 2% a year. You'd get 50%, and there's no penalty. But if you had 25 years and you were 55 years old, you're going to take a 2% hit per year. So rather than get 50%, you're going to get 40% if you go five years earlier.
Right. And then the other consideration that you really have to consider is if you leave at 60, let's say, and you're at 35 years.
Just bringing this up.
Somewhere between 60 and 65, you've got to pay for a health insurance, because you're not eligible until you're 65. So, you know, some.
So if you all remember last year, I was screaming, you, as we were, two, two years ago, as we were looking at changing from, from our insurance, I was looking at you going, you guys realize I'm paying 1,800 a month? And you all looked at me like, what, it's 1,800 a month for my insurance? Yeah, it's, it's not easy. It took me a year and a half to write that letter, because you really have to know what you're jumping into. I mean, you've got to look at every, so, and there's no social security, and at least for me, there wasn't. I started at 21, and when you taught, there was no social security at all. So I had to retire, I had to get my LLC, I had to earn my quarters, because you've got to have your 40 quarters. So yeah, guys, it's not like you think. It's not you go home, flip open something, turn on the tube, watch SportsCenter. No, it's quite an, it's a loving occupation, but there's a lot involved in this. You just don't jump.
And that could be it. You could have people out there who may be close to have the years in, but who are like, I can't retire because I need the health insurance. I can't afford not to have that health insurance plan and the partnership 2.0, because I carry it for my family. You know, that could be a person who's like, I have the 35 years, but I just need that, you know, for the next five years. I can't afford it otherwise, or I have a pre-existing condition, so I have to keep it.
It's a lot of thought.
Any of you of those people stay, you know, five or six or seven years, those are the people who are at the highest step. So those are, you know, if you had a new teacher come in for those five years, there'd be a huge difference in the salary too.
But think about it, if you start at 25, right?
I started at 21.
Right. If you start at 25, there's 15 steps. You're at top step by the, before 40. So you're at top step for at least another 20-plus years, because there's only 15 steps.
And to add on to that, you really, not for any of you out there, this is not an insult, to work after your 35 years is kind of ridiculous, because you're really not making anything. Now, I know you're going to look at me and say, yes, I'm doing it, I got it. You're getting, but you're really not adding to your retirement after 35 years, if you look at it mathematically.
Right, get Max out.
Right. On the other side of that, I mean, if you look at the contracts, and, you know, sometimes there's step freezes, sometimes we combine steps, so it depends, I guess it depends on your district too. Because they play a lot of those games in teacher negotiations, when you should be at top step in 15 years, it could take you 20 years to get there, it could take you 22 years to get there. And, you know, not that that's like a huge difference, but there is something also in, you know, I just said, if you have a new teacher come in, and you have a teacher at top step, stay for five years, there's a big difference in savings. Yes, but the, but you also have a seasoned teacher in your district for five more years. So you're paying, but that's somebody who has been in your district for 30 years, 35 years, has relationships, has a rapport with the students.
Less work in the administration. I, if I was an administrator, I'd rather have a squad, and once again, I'd defend anybody, of all 20-year and higher vets. Because I don't have to watch them.
So go ahead, say what you guys think.
I don't, they're, they're there, they know what they're doing. So yeah, I know what you mean. And the savings isn't what you think. When you add on the insurances, and you add on all this, it's really, it's, people look at the math and go, you know, Joe Smith is at 120, I'm going to hire a rookie at 45. No, you're not figuring out the benefits. There's, there's a lot going on there. It's not as large of a savings as everyone thinks it is.
Well, and I, in one of our budget documents, Joe broke out the increase, that I think something like half, half or more than half the increase is from salaries and benefits contractual increases too, so.
And I wonder how much of the, how much of the Affordable Care Act plays in on people choosing whether or not to retire? Because think of it, if you have, and I'll use myself as an example. If I'm retiring and if I'm a teacher and I'm looking at to retire at 60, let's say, well, I happen to have a child. When I'm 60, that's going to be 16. And will need to possibly cover that child for 10 more years of insurance. I mean, I would have to go out and get some sort of coverage that's going to cover me and the child for possibly 10 more years. Because when I go on Medicare, at 65, certainly the child can't go on Medicare with me, you know? I mean, so I wonder how much the Affordable Care Act plays in, into that, and changing some of the rules of staff not being able to retire because of that. It's just a complicated thing. It's just not as easy as I am, I'm, I'm in here 35 years, I'm going to go.
No, and for everyone, as you said, it's very unique, for every single person.
So maybe for the next one, if we know how many people really are at that, I think that would be a good gauge, so that everybody knows, like, how many people are really eligible?
Yep, yep.
That could.
Yep, I've got it for you, it's easy.
Because there could be only a handful, and, you know, I think that would be a good gauge to know. We don't need individual, we just need to say, hey, it's only 10 that could, that are eligible, that could.
Right, agree.
Donna, we are voting on the budget the next meeting, correct?
The 19th, yes. Yes, we have to vote on the Tuesday of the 19th, because it goes to the first election on the 23rd.
23, yes, we, 23, yeah.
Does anybody have budget questions? Hopefully you'll get, stop playing phone tag with.
Yeah, yeah, I know, he's hard to get hold of, then he called me today, but it's from, it said anonymous on my phone, so I didn't answer it.
Dave, did you reach out to the pension committee about your idea of possibly not making the payment?
Not officially, because we'll do that, I'll do that at the meeting that we have, and Nick got the date, thank you. It's not a preferred, you know, method. I did have some sidebar conversation with some people, obviously not preferred, but we could look at it and maybe defer it. But I'll at least have the discussion about it. I was looking to try to save, because it would be $400,000 right there.
Well, no, not all of it is that, some of it is the 401.
Yeah, it's 401K2, yeah. So we'll have the discussion, I don't think it's feasible. It may not be feasible. We want to make sure that the money is in there for pensions, and it's building. We have to make those 401K matches too.
Yeah, if the 401K2 included an actuary fee and also the 401K match. So you would probably, correct me if I'm wrong, but Ron, you, it would just be, what, is it like 375?
I think it's 375, yeah.
Of a pension payment, the rest you'd have to, you couldn't remove the actuary fee or the 401K match.
Correct. But depending on how the fund is and the market is, it's a calculated gamble, but do we want to do it or not, so? But I think for now, we have to leave it in the budget.
Okay.
I just want to comment about that too. I was really thinking about this, you know, if the pension plan is well-funded, and it's something we want to look at, one thing that really worries me about cutting it now is that it's not a cut that we can make later. Which means if the budget fails, if the referendum fails, if we have a referendum, which I hope we will, you know, and we get cut a million dollars or something, or $500,000, that's a place we could go to later. If you make the cut now, that's not something that you have at your disposal, so.
Yeah.
Just something to think about. I mean, again, you know, going back to what Joe said about sticker shock, it is a big number. But I think that the referendum and like the referendum results, it's actually really fascinating, because if you look at past referendum results, the first referendum, when the budget fails, you can almost predict how much you need to cut to get your yeses to be more than your noes. And that first referendum is always a baseline, and it guides the dollar amount cut, because you can see, you know, if the budget fails, you know, 30, 70, you have to make a much bigger cut than if the budget fails 45, 55. And if you go back several years, you can see that there's almost a formula as to how much you need to cut to get to yes. And so, you know, cutting big right now doesn't allow you to take out some of the things that you might need to take out later if the budget fails and it fails big. And we just don't know. And I think especially this year, especially this year, with everything that's going on and skipping a year of a vote, I don't, I don't, I don't really have a sense for what would happen.
It's also a different population too.
It's also a very different population.
It's not the same population we had when we used to go through those budget battles.
Right.
A lot of those people moved on.
Right.
Nick, do you have that history, maybe Ron does, of the last 10, 15 years of referendums? And at what point, you know, what percentage was it voted in first time? I mean, we've been lucky the last several years, but you know, what point was it voted down, at what percent? Do you know if that data's out there?
I'm very embarrassed to say that I do have a spreadsheet that shows.
Don't be embarrassed, that's all right.
That shows the yeses and the noes, and how much was cut, and why I can say that.
How many referendums after that?
Yep.
And how far back does it go?
I'll send you the spreadsheet, Nick.
That sounds good, thank you.
It's interesting, right? And then you come to these budget meetings, and you say, the first election says, okay, what do you, what do you want to cut? And I go, well, you know, 327, 864. How do you come to such a specific number? And I go, I want one more yes vote than no vote, and that's what's going to get me there, so.
I think that'd be interesting, Nick, so yeah, yeah, send it, thank you.
That would be wonderful, yeah.
Data drives decisions.
All right, anybody else have anything else regarding budget at this point? Unfortunately, there wasn't much of a change. I mean, if you calculate for next time, whatever that, you know, any, you know, anything with the retirements and what that would be, I mean, that's really going to be really it, unless that we can spread that payment over a significant amount of time.
Yeah.
All right. So we will move, anybody have anything else with that before we move on to the capital budget? All right, here we are now, we will move on to our capital budget.
Yep, I just, I want to thank Ron Jack, Dan Krosick, you know, for all the work on putting this together. This is just a draft, we're going to do a full presentation. I just figured I'd run through a few highlights, and we'll probably do, like I said, a bigger presentation at the, at the next meeting. But seeing as Ron Jack, myself, Dan, we're all new this year, you know, we set up some meetings with each of the building principals and their head custodian, and toured each facility, and just kind of looked at all the areas in need at each of the buildings. Like, you know, like I said, this is still in draft form, we're still getting some firm numbers. We do want, you know, we know that, you know, as we project further out, those numbers become less, you know, less firm than the ones in year one. Even in some of the year one numbers, we have some folks coming out this week. Dan has the elevator company coming out, the roofing company coming out on Wednesday, just to give us some ballparks for some of those year one projects. He has another contractor coming out on Thursday to look at the work being, that probably needs to be done at Monroe Elementary in the cafeteria. And I want to, I want to guess, I think what's really important too, is that you see some pictures, so that's why, with the presentation that comes up, I want to be able to show you some of the things that we're, that we're looking to do, and so you get an understanding of why we want to do it, and why it's, why it's important. You know, I'll just hit a couple of highlights, I won't even talk about everything in year one right now. You know, I know one of the very critical need that, you know, Paul has mentioned before, and I mentioned in the beginning of the budget season, was, you know, teacher laptops at the K5 level. Those folks, you know, I mean, we're relying on technology more now than ever. Those teachers are working with laptop, laptops that are, you know, six, seven, eight years old. So really want to invest in teacher laptops, replacements at the elementary level. If you dive on a little bit, the underground storage tanks at both Fawn Hollow, I'm sorry, Jockey Hollow and Massey, looking at removing and possibly replacing those tanks. You know, right now, you know, for the tanks at Massey, we're paying a yearly fee to keep those tanks certified. And, you know, basically, we're paying a yearly fee that at the end of 10 years, we're going to have to replace the tank anyway. So, you know, much rather get them out of the ground now, stop paying the yearly fee, and it'd be done with that. Our elevators, when we walked around the, when we walked around this building and went to the elevator, which is, if you go down past the auxiliary gym, by the pool gallery there is where the elevator is, we looked at the controls, it looks like something you would see in like a 1960s Twilight Zone, Twilight Zone movie. The control panels literally have like the old transistors, and it's just, you know, I think the, you know, the mechanics of the, you know, the hydraulics and the cage and everything is okay, but the, the controls, and they're starting to act like the Twilight Zone and do whatever they kind of want to do. So, you know, that's, you know, that's going to be important. We need to be, we need to remain ADA compliant, and that's going to, you know, that'll be a big one. Flip over, a couple of the big ones that jump out at, jump out at us are the drop ceilings at Stepney. If you go in there, you'll see a lot of the, the tectum on the top of every, every classroom is starting to deteriorate and, you know, rip off and whatnot, and you can't really do anything to replace that, because it's literally the roof, like right above that is the roof, so you can't take that off. You know, probably one of the ones that causes the most, you know, bewilderment in my eyes is, you know, if I drive to Fawn Hollow on a nice summer day, and pull into that, that front circle of a parking lot, and it's, it's actually really nice, it was done not too long ago, and it's in pretty good shape. The problem is, it's not graded, and it was never linked to the drainage when they put it in. So when you get weather, kind of like the weather we had, you know, either a snowstorm or the weather we had last night, you get a lot of ponding in that parking lot, and in the wintertime, it's a major, major slip and fall issue. So, you know, that needs to either be regraded somehow, have some drainage put in. And then the actual side lot that looks horrible, that, you know, that one, really, if you went to Fawn Hollow and I said, hey, which part of the driveway is, is, you know, more problematic? You'd probably look at the side lot and say that, but it's really the part that looks nicer, it's just no, there's no drainings there. Again, we'll, we'll try to see if we can get some pictures between now and then. I don't know if there's any ice on it, it could be right now. I know what ends up happening every snowstorm is the guys here go over there with salt constantly and do it. But, you know, unfortunately, we've had, I think we've had a few slip and falls over the year, over there. So it's a bit of a liability. And then the other one, the other big one on that page is the cafeteria. If you go out the, out the backside of Monroe L to the cafeteria there, you look at the cinder block and the, obviously some sort of a drainage issue between the roof, the roof drains, and the, it's obviously, you know, getting inside the cinder block and we're getting some crumble there. So, you know, that definitely needs to be addressed, and I think that's causing some of the problems on the inside with the floor and whatnot inside Monroe L. Those are just some highlights for now. Like I said, we'll get you pictures, so you can, I think it's important that you see it. It's, it's easy to just talk about it, but, you know, there's, there's a lot there, but, you know. And that's, you know, we've put this together, this is. and that's, you know, we've put this together, this is, you know, obviously, it's a pretty aggressive five-year capital budget, and I don't know where it'll end up, but, you know, it was a very worthy exercise for us to go around all the buildings and see what the issues are.
So just so that everybody knows what ends up happening with the capital plan, is we submit the capital, five-year capital plan with our budget, and then once it's submitted, the town takes over, they put it and log it on their master list of combining with the town project, and then they sit and they do discuss like, yep, this is something we can do, nope, this is something we're going to defer to another year, nope, this is coming off totally, correct?
Yep.
That's correct.
And so it's rolled into them, so this is not something we have to say, oh, no, no, we don't want to do, you know, let's cut this, this just goes to them. The town makes all those decisions because that's part of the town master capital plan and their whole bonding stuff, we don't have the ability to approve these projects, we have no ability to bond ourselves, that's all for the town to decide. You know, we'd have to probably three bid them all, but, you know, and submit that, but it's them to decide yes or no.
Just a quick question, some of these projects in year one and year two, are these projects that have already been bumped? Because I remember, oh, gosh, when I was on the town council six years ago, seven years ago, we had a lot of projects on capital that we would bump, and then when we would get the new capital, the new town capital plan, it would show up as like year one, we're doing these things, but it's like the current, the budgeted year, we're doing these things, but they were actually bumped from the previous year. So are these all like new projects, or some of these things in year one and two, things that we've wanted to do in the past that are now being put here?
I think there's some more comprehensive plan that we put together, but it definitely has some things that have been, that were included in previous capital plans that were bumped. And then there were some things in the capital plan, quite frankly, that we were able to, you know, some of the, you know, walk-behind cleaning machines that we had had in the capital plan last year, we were able to use funds, you know, were designated specifically for that through the coronavirus relief, so they're not in here because we were able to get them that way.
And I think if you look back at some of the old capital plans, it wasn't never this comprehensive. Now, I do know that the Monroe L roof was always slated for twenty-two, that's been on a capital plan for twenty-twenty-two for a number of years now, knowing that that had too. But like, I think the restoration of the Massey old sections, like that to me is new. Like, I don't remember seeing that before.
The roof.
On a plan. And I don't ever remember seeing drop ceilings, so I would think that's new.
That's new.
But I do remember the whole Fawn Hollow front driveway parking lot, I don't think that's new.
Yeah, I think that's been on there before.
Yeah.
That's the one I just shook my head at, because if you look at it on a nice sunny day, it's a beautiful parking lot.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking that, you know, when we send this over to the town, you know, they, usually I feel like the Board of Finance asks, like, what are your top five, or if you had, you know, seven hundred thousand or seven hundred and fifty thousand, how would you want to, when I say you, I mean like the super and the board chair, or like, you know, the board, so, I didn't know if we were going to like talk, not tonight, maybe when we get to the next, the next meeting, but talk about like how.
Prioritize.
Yeah, what you think should be the priorities and as we send that off.
Do you know how much comes off next year that they can add on, or you don't know that up there?
For bonding? It depends on, I don't think they've decided what they're going to bond for the current year yet, they're going to wait for the tax collections to come in in January, so. Right now, more is going to roll off than, you know.
Then that's going to go on.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Does anybody have anything else? Jerry?
What should do it, Joe?
Second, David, all in favor? Great, thank you so much, everybody.